I'd like to call for order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call. Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Piper?
Here.
Sofa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi? Malay? Uwer?
Here.
Saron? Vogel singer? All right. Yes. I got eight seconds. All right, we'll move on then to item number two, which is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone if you come up. Make sure you can see that it's green and then you can hear yourself in the background. Do we have anything to be edited or changed for tonight's agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, move on to item four, matters from the public for anything not on the agenda tonight. Is anybody here for anything not on the agenda? Nobody online. Okay, then we'll move right into the consent agenda. Aldrin Beck?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2024-138-R approving an intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Park District for fiber to Callahan Community Center. Resolution 2024-125-R authorizing execution of Task Order 46 with Engineering Enterprises for design engineering services of the South Mallory Avenue Water System Improvements. Resolution 2024-141-R approving purchase of a sanitary sewer lateral launch CCTV system with standard equipment and company in the amount of $139,374.61. And for approval, the Cow Executive Session Minutes for February 14th, 2023, on the purchase of real estate, March 28th, 2023, collective bargaining, April 11th, 2023, the purchase of real estate, May 9th, 2023, land acquisition, setting the price of sand for lair, setting the price of land for sale, September 12th, 2023, litigation, purchase of real estate, and December 12th, 2023, litigation. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. By Beck, second by Uwer. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item six, ordinance 2024-71, conditional use for entertainment and recreation indoor facility, large scale. Zach?
Hi.
Welcome.
On October 16th, 2024, the Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals conducted a public hearing to locate an entertainment and recreation indoor facility, large scale, at the Windpoint Shopping Center at the address of 301 North Randall Road. The proposed use is Pickled. It's a pickleball facility that's looking to occupy 34,000 square foot space, offering up to 12 pickleball courts, four golf simulators, and six table tennis tables, as well as some member-only areas based off of their membership rates, you know, with that. And this would be their fourth location. They currently operate three other locations in the region, Woodbridge, Wheaton, and Shanahan. And, you know, they found that the Fox Valley region would be a great location. Staff during the review of this did look at the shopping center's mix of retail uses versus non-retail uses as required by the zoning code. This would be the only non-retail sales tax contributing use in that shopping center, accounting for only 12.5% of the square footage for the shopping center. So staff does feel that this is complementary to the existing retail uses in that shopping center. During the discussion, the Plan Commission was excited and appreciative of this applicant moving forward, and they did recommend approval subject to the conditions outlined in draft ordinance 2024-71. Those conditions are rather limited on this, but one condition to outline is that staff had recommended that temporary signage, as defined in the zoning code, is prohibited except for when installed under the zoning code's grand opening provisions. Essentially, that's flag signs, banner signs, things such as that. We felt that this is a prominent enough location with clear sightlines that outside of their grand opening provisions, that it would attract users to the center and be a destination in itself. I'm available for questions. The applicant does have a short presentation, though, after any questions from the council.
Does anybody have any questions from council? So if they have a presentation, let's see.
Awesome. So I'm Nathan Patrick Taylor and one of the co-owners of Pickled. How many of you play pickleball? This is excellent. That means the rest of you don't know a lot about it, right? That's what I want to hear. I brought props, so I'll get to that here in a little bit. Zach said you would indulge me for a little bit of pickleball history before I told you about our pickleball business, so I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. I won't spend a lot of time on it. So there may be slides I might skip in this whole process here. So a little bit about me. I am not originally from the Chicagoland area. I actually grew up in the Seattle Tacoma area, and I first played pickleball in 1992 when I was 14 years old. Went to Huntington University and played tennis there because pickleball was not a thing back then, which I'll get to. And after college, I met my wife and we live in Downers Grove now. And then as pickleball became big, we decided to go ahead and see if we could make a go of it in the pickleball world. So pickleball itself was invented on Bainbridge Island, which is just west of Seattle across the Puget Sound, only about 60 miles away from where I grew up. 1965 is where it all started. In the backyard of a house on Bainbridge Island, the kids were bored in the summertime because it was raining. There's a Seattle joke in there somewhere. And the court that they used was a badminton court, so that's why a pickleball court is the exact same size as a badminton court. They took the net and lowered it. They used paddles instead of a racket and they used a ping pong ball. So it is kind of like badminton, table tennis, all rolled into one. If you were to play Honey, I Shrunk the Kids and shrink yourself down and put yourself on a ping pong table, that's kind of what the game is like. Instead of a ping pong ball, it evolved into a wiffle ball, which I'll show you in a minute, and then special rules because the game is very, very close. You play only about 14 feet apart, even though the court's 44 feet. And so there's a special area up at the front called the kitchen that comes from shuffleboard. So it's an area you're not allowed to stand in and play from. The equivalent to all of this, if you want a midwesterner's perspective, pickleball is your version of bags. It's a barbecue game. That's really what it is. I don't know what the guy is doing in the background there. See him hiding in the trees? That's weird. I don't know where that came from, just in the picture. So we don't play cornhole. Sasquatch would take the cornhole game, but we do play pickleball.
Play bags, you're not cornhole.
Sorry, bags. My apologies. Bags. My mother-in-law is from Michigan. She still calls it cornhole. And I say bags. She's like, you're talking about cornhole. Can never, I can't win. I can't win. So the growth of the game, where did it all start? It moved off of the island and got into the cul-de-sacs in the Seattle area. So the cul-de-sacs are about 30 feet wide, which is how much space you need to play width-wise. Length-wise, doesn't matter as much. It's supposed to be 44 feet, but most of the game is played 14 feet apart. The president of Seattle University brought the game on campus, and he was also a politician, and he played it at fundraisers. Seriously, he set up a small net and a court inside, and it was a fundraising event. The New York Times picked up an article about pickleball, and a company called Pickleball Inc. started selling sets, starter sets, with a net, two paddles, and a ball for $29.50. So if you're wondering how it got to Florida, people in New York bought the sets and then brought it down to Florida with them. It is not a game from Florida, nor is it from Arizona. People from Idaho did that. After that, the Pickleball Inc. company introduced it into high schools in Washington, Oregon, and Idaho, and then they attended the national PE teachers' conferences, Kansas City. Kansas City has a big following. That's why it's so big there. I do have one question, though. If you've ever been on a plane, you have actually had a piece of pickleball in your life. Do you know what those two things share in common? Oh, this would be a Ferris Bueller-type question. Oh, yes? No? Very good. Yes, which plastic? On the floor of every Boeing airplane is a plastic mesh. You walk on it. That plastic is the same plastic that the very first engineer used to develop the pickleball paddle because the ping pong paddle was too small. So, and he was a Boeing engineer. That's where he got it from. So why is it called pickleball? Well, there's two theories. One is that the dog, the dog that the owners had, that dog's name was Pickles, so they just named it pickleball. And the second theory is that the boat that comes in last place in a sailing race is called the pickleboat. I tend to think that this is an instance where both of these things are true. I don't know. No one really knows. So what is the game? I mentioned it's a combination of ping pong and badminton. It is not tennis. Everyone that sees it walks out there and goes, this is just mini tennis. It's not. It's very different from tennis. The rules themselves prevent aggressive and dominating play, so it's very much about strategy and coordination. It's a very social game. Being only 14 feet apart, there is a lot of trash talking during the game, in a fun way, in a very fun way. And it's for all ages, despite the fact that mostly older people play it. Kids who are not big, so they're not playing football or basketball, they might be a little bit smaller, find this game easy to play. And actually, shorter kids benefit in this game. Being tall and long like me doesn't actually help in pickleball. It's a hindrance. It's very easy to learn, difficult to master, and it's super cheap to play. You can get a pickleball for a dollar and a paddle on Amazon for 12 bucks, and you can play. As long as there's a tennis net around, you can just use a tennis court. That's fine. And it doesn't require very much space, which is why we like the space in Batavia. It fits perfect. So the court's pretty small, 20 feet wide, 44 feet long. In that red area in the front called the kitchen is technically called the non-volley zone. You can't stand in there and hit the ball out of the air. So me being six foot three, I couldn't stand on top of the net and just slam the ball. You have to stand away from it. And that's because the dad of one of the kids was 6'7", and they thought it was unfair that he could stand on top of the net and slam it. So they created that area specifically for him. It's played both indoor and outdoor. On an outdoor surface, it's usually played on a tennis court with lines drawn on top of it specifically for pickleball. It can also be played on clay courts, although that's rare, and sport tiles. There's a company in Illinois called, it's not Sportmaster, what's the name of it? I think it's Tilemaster, and they make tiles for it. And some municipalities have used tiles as well. Problem is outside is the ball bounces too high, and this game is horrible to play in the wind. The ball is too light. I'm going to pass one around. Heat, if it's too hot, it's too cold, the ball will crack. Sun is in your face. It's not, not fun to play. And if the court has debris on it, the ball will bounce, sort of weird. So indoor is ideal. Not hardwood floors, though. Linoleum could be a little bit better. Concrete floors are a little bit too hard. Rolled mats, which is what we are using, are really nice on the joints, especially for older players with hip, ankle, knee issues. They like the rolled mats. They're very comfortable to play on. As long as there's not tons of lines, which is where we come in. Usually, like, we have this facility in Woodbridge. Most of the players there play at the park district on the hardwood floors. There are 15 different lines. No one knows which line is in or out, so the ball skips off the floor. So they like playing at our place a little bit better, and the lighting can be a bit rough, and you can play at any time. So this is, this is the way I used to play when I was a kid. You find a slab of concrete or asphalt, tape some lines down, put a temporary net up, and you're good to go. That's kind of how we played. I'm going to skip through some of the terms. These aren't really important to talk about. The rules and the scoring, you will fall asleep if I tell you what the rules and the scoring is. I will just quickly say the games are played to 11, win by two. It uses side-out scoring like volleyball used to use, so you only get points when you serve. And the server is actually the defensive player, not the offensive player, so it favors the returner. You can play the game in singles, not as fun. Doubles is a blast. Four people in a really small space, lots of laughs, lots of fun. It's a, it's a good time. And then I'm not going to go through the video. The paddle itself, so I'm going to give you the paddle. You can take it around. This is a professional paddle. So I'll hand it to you. Just tell you a little bit about what you're holding. So mine is made out of Kevlar, what bulletproof vests are made out of. They also make them out of raw carbon fiber. It's roughly 7.9 to 8.5 ounces. And the surface itself is very thin. Usually, it's just wrapped around a plastic core. So it's just plastic on plastic. That's all it is. And it's a paddle, not a racket. A racket would have, would have strings in it. And then the ball. So I'm going to pass around three different balls. So the first one, this dark green one, is an indoor ball. They also make an outdoor ball. Being indoor and outdoor has nothing to do with whether you are actually indoor or outdoor. It has to do with the surface you're playing on. And then the last one is a foam ball. These are quiet, so if people don't like the sound, they can play with a foam ball. Alrighty, I'm again not going to go through a lot of the terms. It's going to be a little bit boring. Okay, so why do people play pickleball, and why do we want to run a pickleball club? I mentioned before, it's super easy to learn. We're starting to see the age get younger and younger. So when we first started two, two and a half years ago, most of the players were 55 and over. Last year, it started to skew younger, 45 and over. This year, we're starting to get into the upper 30s. We're seeing some kids and teenagers play. We anticipate that this will be a high school sport, and the college sport is taking off like crazy. So we see that happening. It's very social. Some people, they just come out because they enjoy playing, not because they want competition. They just like to be there and socialize. It's very good for older adults who are isolated. It's their time to be able to socialize and exercise. I just had a couple people who had knee and hip replacements, and this is the first time they've been able to exercise in years, and it's a, it's a great sport for that. Mentally, this is one of the really cool things about the game. There are players that we have who are in early-stage dementia Alzheimer's, and the game requires you to think very fast while you're playing, but also remembering the score and the strategy. And there's been a number of research studies that have been done that show how good pickleball is at reactivating some of the memory and cognition in players. It's fabulous. Power, strength, height, weight, these are all less important in the game. It's more about strategy. And let me talk about the players for a minute. So the best female player in the world was a pickleball champion at age 12. She's now 16. But the game is not just about young people. The second-best men's player in the world is actually 45 years old. So this isn't a game of just youth or age. It's a game that anybody and everybody can play. So where do we sort of see this going? There's sort of two routes. The recreational route right now says there's about 36.5 million players. That's growing at a 30% clip every year. It's an international sport. There is a strong push for this to be in the 2032 Olympics. I think it'll be there. The paddles and the equipment are changing all the time. The very first paddle I had was a wood paddle. It wasn't made out of plastic. So there's a whole governing body around what can be in the paddle, how much grit it can have, and then there's rating systems around how good the players can be. And there's still huge demand for more court. There's simply not enough courts, especially in the winter time. On the professional level, the players don't make a lot of money right now, but they're starting to make more. There are tournaments almost every weekend. I mentioned they should be in the Olympics, not the set, but the next set. And then there's a dedicated pickleball TV channel right now, and they stream on YouTube all the time. Some of the owners are celebrities, like LeBron James owns a team. There's a number of quarterbacks, ex-pro quarterbacks in football that own teams, and tons of sponsors around it. And it comes with all its own drama, just like the NBA and the NFL. It's great. If we look at participation rates, so this is people who are actually playing the sport, not just watching it or consuming it. Pickleball's ranked third. This data is a little bit old. We think it's right up there with running by the end of 2024. This is not slowing down, so I'm anticipating that we're going to see this probably get up there with biking at some point. And if you look at the growth year-over-year, the average is 31%, but from 2021 to 2022, it was 85.7, which is a huge amount of growth. The biggest issue right now is the paddles themselves. If anyone remembers tennis, having the spaghetti string incident where you could, there wasn't really a rule about the way that spaghetti strings worked, so they had to create a rule for it. Paddles right now are going through the same thing. There's a trampoline effect where you can get ridiculous amounts of spin and power. These are all growing pains that other sports had. It's just that pickleball's doing it much faster. Like, to get on TV might have taken three or four decades, a sport that came out in the 1950s or 60s. Now, it was on TV within 18 months of it being a pro sport, so it's going quickly. Okay, that is the pickleball history lesson. What about us? So our motto is, we built these pickleball Cubs for players by player. So myself and my co-owner, we both play the game. We're not just in it because we want to run a business. Our goal was to bring the love, joy, and passion for pickleball to the world. That's a big goal. We just didn't want it to be in Illinois. We have plans to go beyond here. This is just our, where we're starting. We are privately funded, so my partner and I fund this personally. We do not have private equity backing. We have three locations, Wheaton, Woodbridge, and our latest one is in Shanahan, Illinois. 24 employees altogether, with a total of 21 pickleball courts, six table tennis tables. They don't like calling it ping pong, but everyone knows it is ping pong. And then six golf/sports simulators. So these golf simulators don't just do golf. They do baseball, football, basketball, ice hockey. There's a dodgeball game in there. So it's, it's an environment that's tailored to people more than just golf, where you can get kids in there. They have something to do besides golf inside the simulators as well. We were strong believers that we wanted the sport to have public access, but at the same time, we're running a business, so we need to make money and we need to pay the rent. So there is a public slash private plan. You can be a member and have access to the club at discounted rates, but the public is also welcome to rent courts as well. We do everything, so leagues, lessons, drills, tournaments, court reservations, you name it, everything pickleball-related. We have lots of social events. I just did one last weekend. It was a pirate pickleball party. Everyone had to dress up as a pirate. I had a hook hand, and I actually played with the hook hand, and I served the ball with the hook hand. There were a couple people that wore patches and then decided to take them off. So it's, it's an amazing sport for that kind of stuff. We have a small retail shop and a small footprint there. We do sell paddles and balls and equipment, but it's not the major focus of our business. We focus on new players, so this isn't if you build it, they will come mentality. We have to build players from the ground up. So our draw is getting in people who have never played, people who have maybe been sitting on the couch during COVID and watching Netflix all day, and now they want to exercise again. And so we're teaching them to play the game, or maybe they're just curious about learning a new sport. And that's where the repeat business comes from. All of them register through a mobile app or a website, and they book courts that way. So what's different about Pickled compared to some of our competitors? We believed in creating large spaces to play, and that means we sacrifice some court space. Like, in this Batavia location, we could do probably 14 or 15 courts, but we're going to do 12 because we want a large, safe place for people to play. We also do soundproofing. There's three different ways we soundproof the space. When you're standing outside, you cannot hear that there's pickleball going on in there, and when you're inside, it's actually very quiet. We create a social environment. It's a very relaxed vibe. I'm not sitting there pushing memberships on anybody. We're just trying to get them engaged in playing the game. We have top-notch pros. Every single pro we hire has a certification in pickleball. We run social events almost every weekend, at least three or four times a month. And then we split out the different levels. So if you're a beginner, intermediate, advanced player, we put you into an appropriate group so you're not getting crushed on by people who are there. That's all I got for you. Good pickleball lesson? Yeah? I will take questions if you have them.
Questions? Yes.
You mentioned the size of this place. How does it compare to your other places?
This is the largest one. So this is 34,000 square feet. Wheaton is 21, Woodbridge is 25, and Shanahan is 16. So yeah, this is the largest.
They're going to have like some type of beverages or stacks or things in there?
We will, yeah. In this location, we do, and the other ones we do as well. And so we will be seeking a, I don't know what it's going to be in Batavia, but we serve non-alcoholic beverages like cokes, Gatorades, but then we also serve just beer and wine. But in those other locations, they're like a Class E liquor license, so no hard liquor. Usually, people might have a drink after a league or something, and that's, that's it. And we don't want it to turn into a bar, so we just keep it at that level. Yes?
How long have your other locations been open?
Wheaton is 18 months. Woodbridge is nine months, and Shanahan was an acquisition that's been open for three and a half years. Yeah.
Do you find folks traveling from pretty far distances coming? About how far are they coming in from out of town?
Yeah, it's interesting. So they, if they can get good games, they're willing to travel 30 to 40 minutes. And so as a tennis player, I was willing to do that. If I knew I was going to get good matches, good games in, I would travel pretty far. If it's a community of players they're comfortable with, friends that they play with, they're willing to travel. It's kind of shocking. The vast majority of the people, of course, live within about five to six miles of the club, but others, they, they will travel kind of far. Yeah.
Do you have competitors that are in this area, or is it against park districts that you'd be competing against?
Yeah, park districts a little bit. We do have, we have one very large competitor. They happen to share a name similar to us, and they're, they're based out of Utah. They are private equity-backed, so they have, I think last count was somewhere in the $200 million range. Their goal is to build 100 or more of these. And I can go into why I think that's a bad idea, but I will, I won't. I'll leave it the way that is. Our model's very, like, it's a family-community focus. We never wanted it to be like a corporate ex-fitness or lifetime fitness model. We wanted it to, like, the people that we hire, usually we open the club, we get people in, and then we find someone that lives nearby who knows the other players that are there, and those are the folks that we, that we hire. But yeah, I anticipate we will have strong competition, and you'll have people that are going to copy what we're doing. We're already starting to see that as well, and we'll see whose model wins, I guess. Yes.
Do the memberships be shared between location?
Yes, yeah, very good question. So one of the challenges, and this goes to what you were asking about, the traveling, is to balance, if I have 12 courts, I can roughly fit X number of players on a court over a certain period of time. But if I knew that that person can travel between the two, they might take a spot at each club. And so we've been working through how, how much we think someone will consume. The good thing is they can't clone themselves, so they've got to choose one or the other a day when they go and play. But so far, I was really worried that we would get inundated with people who would want to cross over. So far, about, I want to say 8% to 10% of them go between clubs, but they do view that as a valuable access, to your point about travel. They have a friend they play with at their main club that they want to go play somewhere else, so we've been allowing that, without an additional cost.
I've had several people in coffee shops and that ask me last weekend, start getting out that you're hopeful to come in here. Are you going to have a sales area within this where you can buy supplies, shoes, or brackets, or whatever? You're going to have that? So, because I had one say they really like to get in, but they don't have enough equipment to. So you will sell that as part of a sales area?
Yeah, yeah. It's a, I call it a small footprint. It's a really small portion of the overall square footage. But we've tried to acquire, I'll say, different brands at different price levels. It was one of the things, the feedback that we get from new players is they'll go out and, so I'll say the Amazon paddle is a good example. It's a $12 paddle. Perfectly good the first couple of times you're going to play. In fact, I tell them that. Don't buy a $250 paddle. Just buy a $12 one, see if you like it, play a couple times, and then I'll give you a demo paddle that's a little more expensive. You'll immediately be able to tell the difference. But we carry them at different price points. There's one right now that we're selling that's $80. It's a fabulous paddle. So the one that I've been passing around, that's $175. The $89 one is just as good as my $75 one. So we kind of help guide them into, build a little bit of trust with them that I'm going to show you a bunch of different paddles. I'll sell you the expensive one if you want it, but I can help recommend paddles that'll work for you.
What is your timeline for opening?
Pretty quick. So we really don't want to miss the winter because that's, that's the prime time where people are going to come in and play. So thankfully, what is really attractive about that space is that it's already in very good shape. And what I mean by that is the flooring there works really well without major repairs. I don't have to tear down a lot of walls. Actually, I don't think I have to take hardly any walls down, and we don't have to build any walls. So actually going through the permitting process, right, we're looking at, well, if we don't have to do that much work, what is kind of cosmetic that we could do quickly, and then what, what could wait? So one of the things that might wait a little bit is the golf simulators, because those do need walls. So we might wait a bit of time to do that, just get the pickleball established first, and then come back and do that later. So a long way of answering. So a long way of answering the question is, we're looking at early December if we can get it open by then.
Any more questions? Okay, thanks for the lesson.
Yeah, my pleasure.
A lot more now.
You got it.
If there are no other questions, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-71, conditional use for entertainment and recreation indoor facility, large scale. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. It'll be on our next city council meeting on Monday night. Sarah?
Actually, Alan, thank you. This is my ward. You don't have to get up there. I apologize for my tardiness. I have been waiting for this kind of thing in this area for so long, and I am so excited. So thank you. I do think it's going to be a great space for this. And I think it's going to, I have heard people talking about this for a very long time. There's been whispers that it was coming to Batavia, and lots of people in Ward 7 are very excited, so I think it will do very well.
Move on to item number seven, which is ordinance 2024-62, proposing establishment of amendment to special service area number 17, Hazelwood Point subdivision phase one and two in the city of Batavia, and providing for public hearing and other procedures.
True.
Thank you, Alderman Wolf. Yes, so this ordinance before you tonight would basically initiate the process to make a amendment to our existing special service area 17, which is for the Hazelwood Point subdivision. It's basically phases one and two of that original development. Earlier this year, Jason Zimberoff was an applicant for the Zimberoff subdivision, which basically conveyed some property from one property he had to 1217 Beckman Lane, basically in order to make sure that the properties can be consolidated in the future, then the applicant can have one tax bill, and that basically all of his holdings are within the same SSA. We were going to initiate the process to begin a modification to that special service area. This one is a backup special service area primarily for stormwater maintenance or stormwater management areas. It's not been an actively levied SSA. So, and if you recall, I think a couple years ago, we made some modifications likely to the Tanglewood Hills SSA in terms of some of the geography. And provided that the change in area has an EAV, or excess value, of 5% or less of the overall area, we can do that process. It's a very similar process to any other SSA, but all we would be notifying is the owner of the property that would be added to the SSA. So there's no change to the rate of the levy. It would still be a 50 cent per $100 value of assessed value, and the levy would be at $0 with the approval. But basically, if this ordinance is approved, we would follow the calendar that's attached with the ordinance, which would set us up for a public hearing on January 21 of 2025. So we do recommend approval as presented tonight.
Anybody have any questions? I know from time to time, we have to do this when they change property owners or move property lines. Okay, no questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-62, proposing establishment of amendment to special service area 17, Hazelwood Point subdivision phase one and two in the city of Batavia, and providing for public hearing and other procedures. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And does that have to stay on the regular agenda, or can that go on consent?
This one, I think, can go on consent because it's just establishing the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight, ordinance 2024-072, amendments to the text of the zoning code, miscellaneous amendments, chapter 5.1, chapter 5.2, section 5.606.1B, and chapter 6.
Again.
All right. On September 18, the Plan Commission and Zone Board Appeals conducted a public hearing for various proposed tax amendments to the zoning code. Primarily, those changes were outlined here in the background. In chapter 5.1, there was changes made to reflect, changes to titles and terminology used across the zoning code. For an example, we updated Scott Buning's title within this section of the code to Community and Economic Development Director, so it's reflective of his current position and title, as well as we changed some terminology to be reflective of how group homes are defined elsewhere in the zoning code and used professionally in the world. So that was the outline changes to chapter 5.1. Chapter 5.2, there's several more substantive changes that are made here, so I will go through those, and feel free to jump in with questions, or if necessary. I'll stop at the end of that section, though. With chapter 5.2, the first proposed change that we have made is to add a requirement for a written disclosure of beneficiaries to be provided with any zoning application. This is something that we have requested on some conditional use applications in recent times, primarily related to when they have state licenses, so we can verify that individuals, LLCs, other entities are the same individuals who are licensed by the state. That could be with massage establishments, auto uses, cannabis dispensaries, and other type of uses that, you know, they have to have their state license to operate here in Batavia. This is something that a lot of other communities are implementing and is becoming more common, so the city does know who we are working with. And we, staff is proposing to add those regulations in. Essentially, it would be to identify any individuals who are operating as an agent, manager, or have financial interest in that business. The second proposed change to the section that we are, I apologize, the second change that we are proposing is to specify what qualifies as application activity for the purpose of an open application. Essentially, over the last year or two, we've had a couple of applications that have gone extended periods of time without any communication or activity between staff and the applicant, meaning staff had reached out, staff had sent comment letters, and the applicant essentially did not respond or acknowledge any of that. What we are looking to do is clearly define in the code what is activity, and that is outlined as a provision of a response to the staff comment letter related to, you know, a submittal, providing new documents or plans, or provide documentation that a professional study has been conducted. In some instances, you know, a traffic study may be requested, or other utility capacity studies are requested, and those can take anywhere from, you know, several weeks to months, depending on the third-party reviewers. So that is something that if they were to indicate that we are pursuing this, that is sufficient enough to show that there's activity. Another aspect of this is to allow the Community and Economic Development Director to inquire with an applicant after a period of 90 days of inactivity to request a progress update. The code currently allows an open application to go for a period of 180 days. The modified language would allow staff to make that request, provide a status update on the progress after 90 days, and then if there has been no update to provide within 15 days, the Community Development Director can essentially say, within 30 days, we're going to close your application. So it's not, you know, an immediate closure. There's a process, there's procedure, but it's looking to essentially accelerate that 180-day period down to what I believe would be 120 days, so roughly four months rather than a six-month period. Again, we've had a couple instances where applications were rather stagnant and without several inquiries being answered, and this has created some burden on staff to be able to, you know, be able to handle applications in an effective time, because if they do come back, staff could be working on several other projects. A prime example is engineering. You know, they could be allocated to work on this project, but if six months go by, they might be working on several capital projects for the community. So it's something that, to help balance staff time, as well as having individuals not hold up properties for long periods of time so other individuals can take, have a shot at moving their business into those locations. And then staff also proposed to address several repetitive, you know, several language that was repetitive in the application, and then we proposed a cooldown period so someone couldn't get an application denied or closed out, and then they can submit again the next day. So we have proposed a cooldown period. That means that they have a little bit of time to wait, come back with some sufficient, you know, information that is different. Like I said, I was going to stop at the end of that chapter discussion since there's a little bit more meat to that. Is there any questions from the council on that?
Kevin?
I've got a couple of questions here. I do see that our language is, you know, the director may issue after our 135-day total period, right? So 90 days, then 15 days to respond, and 30 days, director may issue. The director cannot issue it before that 30-day period. And now what are we thinking of in terms of the standards for the may-issue part?
So may, you know, I guess may means that he has the ability. Obviously, it's discretionary, that does come with the director's position and title to make that discretionary call at times. In any case, you know, if the director or the city administrator in that case felt that an applicant was, you know, in a gray zone, they would consult the city attorney before, you know, deeming something ready to close. But with that, we haven't until, again, until recent years, had applications go stagnant until, again, the last year or two. We've had several applications. Prior to this, there was nothing on record that, there was even a conversation of having to deem an application inactive at the 180-day period.
Okay. I'm just happy to hear you've thought about it, sort of the intent of that question. My second question, I guess, would be just how long is the cooldown period?
Oh, the cooldown period, and I apologize, I'm going to have to check.
A year.
One year. Okay. All right, thank you.
Mark?
For that notification, is that, should we specify in here something that's like certified mail or something like that? Because somebody could easily say, well, I never got it, if you just send an email or something like that.
Yeah, so are you saying a notification, meaning the Community Development Director would notify?
Yeah.
So any notification that we do make, we typically do a three-part. We do a certified mail, regular mail, and an email. And the reason being, if it does go to, let's say, litigation, we have to sufficiently show that we have notified them. So we do notify individuals of certified mail, just as we would with any code enforcement or zoning enforcement action.
Okay, thank you.
No questions?
Okay. And then I'll move on to the remainder of the proposed tax amendments. The last one is that staff is recommending that we reduce the automatic expiration of design review applications from two years down to one year if they have not obtained a building permanent, working on that. Essentially, staff did come to the council several years ago. We reduced the timeline on all of our other zoning applications to the one year. Design review at the time was not noticed, so we are here cleaning that up to make it consistent with our other applications. The reason being is, again, if an applicant is not actively pursuing an application after a year, you know, they are holding up a property that they may not own, and staff wants people to actually pursue this, open up, and, you know, see them, you know, here in the community. And that being said, you know, if they're, after a year, if they're not doing so, you know, it is, again, taking up a valid property that could be used for another use. The Plan Commission was supportive of all these requests. There was some discussion on the beneficiaries, but they understood why staff was requesting this. And again, with conditional use applications, we have been asking for this already. We just wanted to codify this and make it applicable to all zoning applications, and we would provide applicants with a standard form to fill out. Otherwise, we recommend approval of this item for the city council.
No other questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-72, amendments to the text of the zoning code, miscellaneous amendments, chapter 5.1, chapter 5.2, section 5.606.1B, and chapter 6. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Move on to item nine, which is resolution 2024-134R, approving task order number seven with V3 Companies LTD for construction engineering services for Safe Routes to School project for an amount not to exceed $84,614.
Thank you so much. In 2021, the city received $250,000 from the Safe Routes to School grant to install sidewalk on Republic Road, Maple Avenue, Webster, and also on Blaine Street. So we have been working on that project for a while. We had a couple of public meetings, invited residents to the Cow meeting you're all aware of. And finally, this project has moved to the design phase after the preliminary engineering, and the design is, the final design is with the IDOT for final review. As part of the funding agreement, we have to pass an agreement and also hire a Phase Three construction engineer who will oversee the construction and then close out the paperwork for the federal funding or state funding that we have. So this item and the next item, they're the same items. One is for hiring the construction engineer, this is this item. The next one is the item for executing the agreement with IDOT. So because it's a federally funded project, we had to hire a consultant through what is called a QBS process, quality-based selection. So we invited a few consultants to bid on this project, submit their qualification. So we looked at their qualification, and the best qualified consultant, you negotiate with them a scope of services. So once you negotiate the scope of services, then you negotiate the hours with them. So they submit a scope to them. You say, okay, this is what you are going to do, this is not what you are going to do. And then you say, okay, now tell me how many hours it will take you to do those services. So they propose, and then we push back, saying we don't think it's going to take that long, and then we negotiate an hour. Once you negotiate the hour, no more negotiation. Then they just put the dollar amount next to the hours, and you just get the dollar amount. You can be sticker shock at that time, but the game is over at that point. So that's the process of QBS. It's federal government thinks that it's a fair process, so you're not hiring a cheap consultant, if you want to say, who may not provide a good service. So they want you to hire the best consultant out there based on their qualifications, and dollar amount comes at the end. So V3 came out to be the top. V3 has provided or proposed personnel that worked on Prairie and Wilson. He has worked with us on the first Prairie project, on the second Prairie project. He's a very good construction engineer, very happy with his performance, so he's going to oversee the entire project, so we could not be any more happier than him. So with that, I invite any questions that you may have.
This is the one, just for everybody to remember, this is one that we had quite a few discussions over, some of the routing of some of these sidewalks and different spots. I'm really happy that we finally get this done. You know, I pushed a lot of sidewalks in a lot of places, and this is when I actually just got another email about last week, somebody that lives on McKee Street wondering when this was finally going to get done because it directly affects them now with school-age children, that they want to be able to go on a sidewalk to get to the school and not have to walk in the street. Kevin?
I apologize if this has been covered before. Have the residents along these routes already been notified, or is this going to be a surprise to them?
Oh, yeah. Okay, great. Just a... There was lots of discussion on your...
Just for you. I've seen a couple of these, a couple of these are in and near my ward.
Yeah.
I mean...
A topic of contention.
I mean, most of you were in this council when we went out and marked all the driveways where the approximate sidewalk location is going to be, so people can see the five-foot sidewalk. So we looked at the preliminary design and pretty much said, okay, this is where your sidewalk is going to be. So we did that for Republic and also on Maple Avenue. So residents know this is coming. We have... We have notified them multiple times. We are actually planning, even though the project is not going to start till April or May, sometimes in that timeframe, after we open the bid and we kind of see that the numbers look good and we are going to move forward, we are planning to actually send another letter to them. We don't do that typically. We'll tell them that it's coming, like, in a couple of months. And obviously, just before construction, they will get another notice.
And I do think it was appreciated that you actually did what you usually don't do and go personally mark out where the sidewalks were, because I don't think there's been a whole lot of feedback or concern after you actually diagrammed exactly what was going to happen. And so that's appreciated, because we didn't get any more emails about that.
This is one of the most difficult projects that I have probably taken, as far as pushback from residents. I mean, typically, residents love sidewalk. They call us and say, when are you going to put the sidewalk in? But this was a totally different type of pushback.
All right. Well, that being said, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council, Resolution 2024-134R approving task order number seven with V3 companies, limited for construction engineering services for the Safe Roots to School project for an amount not to exceed $84,614. Motion by Wolf, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that can go on consent, too. And then up next is item 10, Resolution 2024-135R approving joint funding agreement for federally-funded Safe Roots to School project.
So for that resolution, you just need to look at the table that's been provided. It gives you the breakdown of how much Fed is paying into this project, how much city is paying. So there are two portions. One is the construction. The way it works is IDOT will let out the project, so the contract is between the contractor and IDOT. So IDOT kind of writes the check to the contractor, and then they send us an invoice for reimbursement. So which is, I really like that, because we can hold the money for a long time. They don't bill us for a long time. So the second one is the construction engineering, which is, we have the contract with the V3, and then we ask IDOT for reimbursing us. And Peggy does a really good job. As soon as she writes a check to V3, she submits to IDOT. But IDOT takes a long time to write that check to us, so. But construction portion is always the bigger portion, so the later they send us the invoice, the better it is. So that's pretty much, the agreement pretty much says, you know, you're going to pay this, I'm going to pay that, and in case the bid price comes out higher than what we are anticipating in this table, IDOT will come to us and ask us, are you willing to pay for the extra? Because there is cap. They would not go above the amount that you are looking at. So at that time, we obviously decide. But if the construction price come out lower, then it's automatically go. So the agreement pretty much says who is going to pay what, you're going to reimburse them, they're going to reimburse us, and blah, blah, blah. So that's pretty much it. Any question? Now, I would say this, this is a draft agreement that we sent to IDOT. Typically, they do not make any changes, but there might be minor changes. There will be no dollar amount changes, but it would be like minor, you didn't click here, click there. So once we get the feedback from them, because they have the draft agreement, we take the draft agreement to mayor. At that time, it's final, and mayor signs it. So typically, there is no time between when we get the comments back from IDOT and mayor sign. So that's why we bring the draft agreement to you, but it's pretty much the final.
Questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend a council, Resolution 2024-135R approving joint funding agreement for federally-funded construction for the Safe Roots to School project. Motion by Wolf, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 2024-136R approving master services agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated.
So this Resolution 136 and the next item, which is 137, they're also the same project. So as a background, we have Main and Randall, there is a pedestrian crossing, but that's, we have gotten feedback that it doesn't really work for people crossing that intersection or the bikers, you know, trying to cross the intersection. So we have been discussing to do a feasibility study to see what kind of options do we have to connect our west side of Randall to the east side for mostly pedestrian and bicyclist. As the memo says, it's not in the bike and pet plan, but it's identified as one of the most difficult in the top 10 intersection to cross for pedestrians and bicyclists. We have had some conversation with KDOT about that. They agreed that we should move forward with a feasibility study. So we went and invited a few consultants to say, we want to do a feasibility study. We don't do a lot of feasibility study in the city, but just as a background, as part of feasibility study, you kind of look at what options you want to go for. Like preliminary engineering, you already know what you want to do. Like, you want to reconstruct the intersection, or you want to reconstruct the street. But when you want to put in a crossing, we are not sure without doing a feedback from residents or doing some kind of pre-preliminary engineering to say what we like. Is it an overpass that we are going to like, or is it an underpass? Or is it ad grade crossing? That means you just cross Randall Road when it's a red light, you know? So that's why we are doing this feasibility study to see which option our residents and council, at the same time, will like, overpass, underpass, or ad grade crossing. Feasibility study has another advantage, which is, once you do a feasibility study, you can take it to CMAP or Candle Council and say, I have done a feasibility study, now fund me for preliminary engineering and design engineering and all that, because we know what we want, you know? So there is a, you kind of get a leg up on that portion. What CMAP and KKOM really likes is that you do the preliminary engineering. At that point, you are sure going to get money, because now you have gone another step, and you have invested your own money to do a preliminary engineering, and now you can really say, I'm, in engineering world, we say shovel-ready. That means I'm ready to go, and I've done one phase. So funding the feasibility study and subsequently preliminary engineering has a lot of potential of getting money. One of the projects that I was talking to Max about is, like, we got the $1 million for the bike path relocation next to the West Water Treatment Plant, and they have opened up another funding. It's called the STP Shared Funding. It's pretty much like, and I said this, that the councils that don't spend the money, they had a project that got funded, project didn't move forward, so the council takes the money back. The CMAP takes the money back from them, saying, you're not moving forward, so I'm taking the money back. Then they open it up for everybody throughout the Chicagoland, saying, who has a project that is shovel-ready can go, we'll fund you. That's how we got the Prairie at Wilson project money, actually, because our Prairie at Wilson came from CMAP directly, not through the Candle Council, because they said, oh, you have done the preliminary engineering already, so you are ready to go. So here is the money, do the design, do the construction. So that bike path, you know, that shared funding has opened up, we are going to look into that tomorrow. There is a webinar we are going to attend. But they, somewhere I was reading that they want shovel-ready project. That means they want somebody to, almost done with preliminary engineering, so that they can move to design and construction. So just as a background, I just wanted to give you that, that if you see us ever bringing a project that doesn't have any federal funding, but we want to go for preliminary engineering, that would be the case, that we want to move forward, because you have a higher chance of getting federal funding for a project that has already completed preliminary engineering.
I just also wanted to mention that it also increases our potential to receive grant funding, where they see multiple agencies collaborating on a project, which is why this crossing of the intersection at Randall and Main, and us working in conjunction with KDOT would probably help us score higher on those applications.
Yes. In fact, KKOM has, like, I think, I believe it says five points you get out of 100 if multiple agencies are working collaboratively for a project. So having said that, so there are three options. We talked about overpass, underpass, and ad grade crossing, and there are three other, three locations, which is north of the intersection, at the intersection, or south of the intersection. So that could be like nine possibilities. So what our plan is, once we have some concepts ready, we'll have an open house, invite everybody in the city to come and look at those options and provide comments, feedback. We'll probably solicit which one you like, you know, number nine, number two, and then present it to the COW at the same time. And then based on that, we'll go back and finalize the feasibility study by end of next year. It's going to take a little bit of time. They're going to have to do some survey work to see whether an overpass is going to work or an underpass is going to work, you know? So some of those things. So it's going to be a long process, but residents and community of the whole will be involved with the whole process. And obviously, Bike and Pet Commission or Active Transportation Commission.
I'm excited about this. Randall is scary. I know, I live west of Randall, and the thought of, I don't let my kids venture on biker foot. You know, on my way here, there was a terrible accident, Randall and McKee. I know those are the three most dangerous intersections underneath the Fabian and 31 in town, so having a genuinely safe way to cross would be absolutely wonderful.
I want to echo that, too. I've had intersection just about every single day during the week. I'm there after getting my coffee at Mocha, and I always see people crossing at that particular intersection, and it's a tough turn, turning right. You can't always see who's there. I think this is a high priority. I agree. Thank you.
And long-term, county has idea about widening it to three lanes in each direction. Maybe not in some of our lifetime, but yeah, they do have plan to do that. So it will be much more difficult at that point.
Questions or comments? If not, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council, Resolution 2024-136R approving master services agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the second part of that was approving task order, Resolution 2024-137R, approving task order number one with Strand Associates for feasibility study with, for pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Randall Road and Main Street.
So once we selected, we followed the QBS process that I explained earlier with Strand. We qualified the consultants, we, you know, just looked at their team, and then we negotiated ours, and we negotiated the price, because we think that this will be a good federally-funded project. So we didn't just ask for your dollar amount. We followed the federal process to make sure that if, anytime there is a question comes later on, saying, how did you select Strand, we'll be able to tell that we followed the federal process. And then they, after discussion, they provided us the dollar amount. Obviously, only 2024, only $20,000 is budgeted. Rest is going to be, we project that rest of the money will be spent in 2025. Obviously, the council hasn't approved that budget yet, so we are showing that it's in 2025, $104,300. So just wanted to point that out to you.
I'll make the motion, we recommend a council, Resolution 2024-137R approving task order number one with Strand Associates Incorporated for a feasibility study for pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Randall and Main Street. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we will move on to project status.
Thank you. Probably the most important thing that I want to bring to everybody's attention is that this Saturday and Sunday, November 2nd and 3rd, Wilson Street will be closed between Van Norwick and Western, and this is to allow for Pulte at the Ashton Ridge Development to make the Storm Sewer Connection. And the road will be closed from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and there will be detour signs available, and staff are reaching out to any of the residents or businesses within that closure zone to answer any questions they may have about how they need to, how to get where they need to go. So there will be detours, and the reason the work is being done over the weekend is because it just would really be so disruptive to the school, having this work done during the time that school was in session. And so this was the best of not-so-great alternatives, is to do it this way. So we apologize for the inconvenience, and, but we think that the work can be completed in those two days.
Do we have any games those days?
Friday night.
Friday night, so that shouldn't affect the high school.
That would really be a mess.
Are there any businesses or anything in that section that will be cut off? Or with the street being open, if they have to go in to do the main work? They'll be able to get out either west or east, one of the ways.
Dairy Queen, their last day of the season is Friday, so that was convenient. And Wazio Orthodontics, we have reached out to Wazio, and then we've also reached out to Green Meadows Apartments to help them get where they need to go. You know, I think Wazio has to go east only, and Green Meadows has to go west only, out of the closure zone.
I saw that come out today and thought that's going to be a mess in there for two days.
Also wanted to let everybody know that Max, in particular, has been working really hard on making revisions to our liquor code. As you know, that is one complicated piece of legislation that we have, and small businesses have a lot of difficulty trying to navigate that particular piece of our code. And so we are trying to make some changes to make that more understandable, as well as to create other documents that provide our business community with both a map of what the process to obtain a license is, and then kind of a choose-your-own-adventure of what type of license that you should be applying for. And so we're going to be meeting with the Chamber and Main Street and a few business owners to get their initial feedback on it before we bring those changes back to you, so that we can have received some feedback and refined it before we bring you our final recommendations on those changes. As well, we have, the open house was held on October 24th for the South River Street corridor plan, and we had a number of interested property owners, businesses, and residents that attended that and provided us with feedback on that and what their concerns were. And the consultant is going to be assembling all of that information, as well as any online input that they have received during the process, to develop a condition report summary as sort of an initial step in that South River Street corridor plan. We have issued the full site development permit for Ashton Ridge, and I talked about some off-site utility work, but they're also, anybody driving by can see all of the massive utility installation work that's going on in the development right now. There will not be a plan commission meeting on November 6th. Public Works, the Streets Division, has deployed a new in-vehicle camera and diagnostic system that allows us a greater level of detail when we're tracking the location of our vehicles, and then also the mechanical performance of certain equipments. And in information technology, they are working with both of the largest pieces of software that we have within our organization. LAMA is for the permitting system, and Viewworks is our asset management. LAMA is for the permitting system, and Viewworks is our asset management system within Public Works. And while those two systems currently are locally hosted, we are going to be moving to having them hosted by the software developer. This allows us to, in real time, receive the updates to the software instead of having to wait to install it on our own equipment here. And then also, you know, because of that, allows us to have access to, you know, the latest versions quicker. So we're hoping that that will be an improvement for everyone. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Laura?
Yes.
Is there going to be signage still installed for the road diet?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. That was not ideal, I would say. You know, looking back on the project, we probably would have had things done closer in time, but we're getting it completed as soon as we can. The target was to get it done by the end of the month.
The signs should be getting installed tomorrow.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
I have one. I thought I had read that we had dispensary applications out on Randall. Are those processing? Where do we know where that's going?
Scott can speak here.
We have two dispensary applications that have been filed now. We had a third one, but that was kind of one of the ones that languished, because they were not complete in some of the things we talked about with the amendments tonight. So we do have two of them. One of those, boy, it's a lot tonight. One of those is at the former Bank of America, right at Fabian and Randall, and then the other one is at the old Arby's. So we're working on those, just some additional supplemental information that we need to have, but they are going through the review process right now, so I anticipate those will be in front of the plan commission the next month or so, month and a half or so.
But the Arby's location is not proposing a drive-through.
That's correct. Yeah, they cannot have drive-through. In either case, there's drive-throughs in them, but they cannot have drive-through vending of cannabis.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there others? Then we will need a motion to go into executive session for discussion of contracts related to the purchase, sale, or delivery of electricity.
I'll move.
Motion by Solfah. Second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we do not expect...